Finished town meeting last week in just three sessions. Tonight, we have a number of things on our agenda. The first timed item is at 6:45, and that is our property tax classification hearing. In the meantime, we have public comment and then other things we might tend to. So is anyone here for public comment? Ms. Perrow, please come forward and introduce yourself to the folks at home.
I'm Melissa Perrow from Precinct One. And first of all, I want to thank the Select Board for supporting our Article 19. And we're very hopeful that this will begin to have some change, although we're not expecting a dramatic change. Fortunately, we are entering the quiet time of year. But going forward from that, I'd like to ask, what is the process for developing the schedule of costs?
So we don't actually, we don't actually deal with questions during public comments?
Oh, you don't?
So you can just put to us that you would like-
Okay. I am concerned that we have a process for developing the response costs, schedule, whatever you call it. And also to, a request that the letters that go out, we've had a request from some people who would like that to be pretty specific about the date, the time, the people involved, and the offenses that were contributed to the letter. So that they can take the appropriate actions. It wouldn't be enough just to have a letter saying you've had a nuisance response at such and such an address in their view. So I don't know what has been in the letters, but that's just a request that they be fairly specific. And I guess my last one is a question, so I shan't ask it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming in and expressing your concerns to us. Anyone else have anything for public comment? Okay. Then we will deal with a couple of untimed items. And the first one we will do is the annual proclamation for Human Rights Day. And we have Deb Radway here, who is the Human Resources and Human Rights Director. And she's going to tell us about this year's plans. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Before you, you have a request to declare December 10th International Human Rights Day in the town of Amherst. It's the 64th anniversary of the Declaration of Human Rights on December 10th. And the Human Rights Commission would like to invite the greater Amherst community to its annual vigil on the Town Common at 6:00 PM for a community reading of the International Declaration of Human Rights. If you've ever read it, imagine reading it, a body of people reading it out loud. Its meaning takes on greater dimension when you have a body of people each sharing the reading of it. And we invite everybody to come by candlelight, bring a flashlight or candle, and celebrate their International Declaration of Human Rights. And the Human Rights Commission does request that you issue the proclamation in front of you.
Thank you very much. Anyone have questions or comments about this? Ms. Stein?
Two. First, could we have the volume up because I'm having trouble hearing? And the second thing is, did you say what day? Can you remind us the day?
It's Monday, December 10th, 2012, 6:00 PM on the Amherst Town Common.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the Select Board proclaim December 10th, 2012, as Human Rights Day in Amherst, and encourage all Amherst citizens to be mindful of human rights principles, and urge all municipal, state, federal, and international bodies to incorporate said principles into their laws and policies as a means to move toward the creation of a human rights culture, which is a quote "lived awareness" end quote of human rights principles.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you happen to know how many years Amherst has been declaring this?
I don't.
That's okay. I was just curious.
While making comments, I assume that it will go on the website with some information about how to attend.
Yes, it will.
As opposed to just being in the Select Board minutes. That's great.
Great. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have, oh, let's do finally, the approval of the FY12 Select Board Annual Report. I've been putting it on the agenda every week as pressure to myself to try and get the darned thing done. Finally have. I appreciate your patience. So you have the draft of that Select Board report in your packets this month. And of course, as usual, everything is on our website. So questions or comments about the draft of the report? Ms. Stein?
I thought it was an excellent, excellent report. I would make only one suggestion, and that is, under the section on the last page of the minutes, I would say that I would like to add Mr. Musanti's name to it as having facilitated this new procedure, which is working so well, as well as the great work of Deborah Russo.
Happy to do that. Anyone else have anything to add or subtract? Ms. Burr?
This is just one of the many things we're grateful to you for doing, because it would be way more work for the rest of us, because we wouldn't keep, we don't keep nearly as comprehensive of notes. And it's still a lot of work for you to do, so thank you for doing it on our behalf.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right. Then we need a vote to approve the report as amended.
I move that, excuse me, I move that the Select Board accept the FY12 Annual Report for the Select Board as presented by Chair Stephanie O'Keefe.
With a similar amount of gratitude, aye, second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next up, we have renewal of annual licenses. This is, of course, the time of year when we renew all of our licenses. Because there are so very many licenses that come under the Select Board's purview, we're kind of doing them in waves as the office gets them all ready for our approval. You can imagine there's quite a lot of processing that goes on for each one of those. So this week, we are doing just the liquor licenses. Those are all ready for us. There is a sheet on your desk that is just slightly different than the one that had been in your packet. There were two establishments that had the incorrect license listed for them in the first version. That was Amherst Brewing Company and Amherst Wines and Spirits. One business had inadvertently been left off the first version. That was Edible Adams, which is Chez Albert. And it's just been a slight revision in how the information is presented on Hickory Ridge. And everything else is the same. So any questions or comments about that list of license renewals? Ms. Burr?
I appreciate the comments being listed to the side indicating what information's still pending, even though none of us personally are going to do anything about that. And it's up to the office to make sure that comes in. This is the same kind of stuff that we see cause problems for people when they submit their original liquor licenses. They don't have all their paperwork taken care of, and workers' comp seems to be particularly a big issue for people to get finished. And who knows if that's partly a state not helping them, or maybe it's just a complicated process. But there are lots of hoops for people to jump through, and it's good that we're keeping track of what those are, and we make sure that nothing goes through without it. So, great work, because it's lots of different pieces.
Correct. So those are all, the license fees are all paid, as was required by the state as of last Friday. And none of the licenses, obviously, will be issued until all of those final details are taken care of, but our approval vote enables that to happen. Further questions or comments? Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, and also, as sort of as background, I want to appreciate all of the communications that we've been getting through the year, when there have been questions about enforcement and issues. So, I mean, we're well aware of what's going on here, and the resolutions for that kind of stuff, so.
And they are all recommended for renewal, because there were no significant issues with any of those businesses. All right. Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
I move that the Select Board approve the list of renewals for alcohol and non-alcohol licenses presented dated December 3rd, 2012, subject to receipt of documentation noted as pending for the calendar year beginning January 1, 2013, through December 31st, 2013.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you. We have many more of those at our next meeting in two weeks. Let's see, what else have we got here? We have special licenses while we're on the liquor license subject. Ms. Stein?
I move that the Select Board approve a special all alcohol license for Amherst College Catering Services on behalf of the trustees of Amherst College for a cash bar to be held for a 21-plus student activities event to be held on Thursday, December 6th, I hope, 2012, from 8:00 PM to 12:00 AM in the Freeman Room, Keefe Campus Center at Amherst College. Greg Wardlaw, catering manager.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I move that the Select Board approve a special all alcohol license for Top of the Campus Incorporated on behalf of the University of Massachusetts for a reception to be held Wednesday, December 12th, 2012, from 4:00 PM to 6:30 PM in the Fine Arts Center. UMass Amherst, Meredith Schmidt, Assistant Treasurer.
Second.
Further discussion. Ms. Burr?
I would just ask, and I know that it's the, an issue with the applicants, and it's a small one, but what we list the people's names for is as a contact person, and that we don't actually have a space on the form that says what their title is, and sometimes they include it and sometimes they don't. So it would just be, I think, helpful to just say Meredith Schmidt, Campus Center, Judy Bardwell, Campus Center, just so that somebody knows where they are. They're not from the Fine Arts Center. They're from the top of the campus or Campus Center. I don't really care how we do it. It's just that it comes across slightly different every single time, and it's just like, okay, Meredith Schmidt works with Campus Center. That's the important thing to know at this point. And Judy Bardwell does, too. So, something may be worth keeping track of, but whatever.
Okay.
And then the final one for Amherst College, which we haven't moved yet, we just will want to include a contact person on that one as well.
Right. All right. So further discussion on the second one, Top of the Campus. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
Okay. I move that the Select Board approve a special wine and malt license for Top of the Campus Incorporated on behalf of the University of Massachusetts for a reception to be held on Friday, December 14th, 2012, from 3:00 PM to 5:30 PM in the atrium of the School of Management, UMass Amherst. Judy Bardwell.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous.
I move that the Select Board approve a special all alcohol license for hurricane boosters for a fundraiser to be held on March 16th, 2013, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM in Valentine Hall, Amherst College. And you'll have to fill in the name. I looked at it, and I couldn't decide if it was a student or actually the appropriate contact person.
Peter Sylvan's apparent. That's a part of the boosters.
He's apparent. Okay. So could you fill in that name, please? Peter Sylvan.
It's on, it's actually on the form. It just doesn't say who he is.
Okay.
All right. And Mr. Hayden, would you like to second that?
I would like to second that.
Thank you very much. Further discussion. I'll just note that that is the annual Monte Carlo Night fundraiser for Amherst High School Athletics. It's a wonderful event, one of the really fun things that happens in town during the year. So mark your calendars, March 16th. Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much.
That's okay.
Ms. Burr?
I'll just add the follow-up, that this is just part of my encouragement of staff to redo the form however they want, to make it work easier for them, because it's obviously been old for a long time.
Very good. All right. So now it is 6:45. Perfect timing, because at 6:45 is our property tax classification public hearing, which I would like to now reopen at 6:45. You'll recall that this meeting, this hearing was given legal notice for 6:00 PM in this room, and so Mr. Hayden, Mr. Musanti, and I opened the meeting at 6:00, and immediately adjourned it to 6:45, just like we were supposed to. So, we are here with Assessor David Burgess and John Kik and Marilyn Blaustein from the Board of Assessors. And this is something that we do every year. I will note that this particular Select Board has been doing this together for quite a long time now. I guess three years is the minimum for us, four for most of us. But we're not going to preempt your presentation, because you all work so hard on it every year. And because this is complicated, it's good to refresh all of our memories about it, and in particular, it's good for the public, who may be tuning in for the first time every year, to know.
That's what I wanted to say.
Okay. So, with that-
I was just about to say, you could go ahead and make a motion.
I will note, for folks who are following along at home, that all of this information that Mr. Burgess has provided to us is also in our web packet. So everything you ever wanted to know about tax classifications, you've got access to. With that, Mr. Burgess?
I'm not quite sure if it's everything, because we never split the tax rate, but at least we'll go for it. As Ms. O'Keefe said, this is our annual setting of the classification. The classification, the Select Board are the only people in Amherst that can make a decision if we are going to have one, a single tax rate for all classes of property, if we're going to allow a residential exemption, or if we're going to have a small commercial exemption. So that is why we have to do this every year. I did speak to the Department of Revenue today, and there's a possibility this may not happen in the future if we decide to just go with one tax rate sometime. They're talking about it, but that's a ways away yet. So, just to start out, this year, valuations will not be changing in any significant amount. There will be individual changes for new growth. There will be some changes for errors that we have found. We're continuing with the program of inspecting properties in Amherst. We started up in North Amherst. We've gone through most of the neighborhoods up there. We're about 25% finished, and we'll keep ongoing with that over the next three or four years. That said, some people are going to see some values go down. Some people are going to see things go up, because we see them. But generally, properties will not change. Like, last year, we changed 6%. That will not happen this year. If the Select Board votes to maintain a single tax rate, which I expect to do, we're looking at the moment at a tax rate being $20.39 per thousand. That's up approximately 65 cents from last year. And that will mean that the average tax bill will be $6,504 this year. And that's a change from last year, which was $6,283. So it's gone about $211. And that's all due to the increase in the levy amount by 2.5%, and there is a small reduction in the values because of the abatements that we carried out during the year. So that is the first thing you'll be deciding, if you want to do that. This year's budget is $41,799,725. And the total valuation of the town is now $2,505,011,060. That has gone down about $8 million from last year.
Could you repeat that?
And that includes all classes of property, commercial, industrial, residential, and personal. Personal being all the utilities and business properties that have inventory and various items that are taxable. So, the average value of the property this year for a single-family house will be $319,000. And that is down about $200 from last year. Sorry, let me correct that. That's actually up $200 from last year. I'm sorry. So, that's because we've had some new houses have been built, and we've added them on. The average value for a commercial property this year is $360,000. And that is up from last year, when it was $354,800. So that's a big one. So that's, if the Select Board voted to change the tax rate, in other words, applying more the value, more taxes to commercial, industrial, and personal property than residential, you have the option of raising that by 50%. The impact would be that a property, a commercial property would pay on a tax rate of $30.58, up from the 2039. At the same time, the residential property would go down, the tax rate would go down to $19.23 from $20.39. So the residential tax would go down about $370, while the commercial tax would go up about $3,700. That would be the impact of splitting the tax rate this year, if you did it, at the 50% level. The next item you've got to decide on is if you want to have a residential exemption. A residential exemption is an exemption that will be given to owner-occupied properties. And at the 20% level, that would mean the residential tax rate would go from $20.39 to $23.39. So those properties that didn't get it would see an increase in their value of taxes of $3 per thousand. At the same time, the commercial, industrial, and personal would all stay at the $20.39. And the third item you have to deal with is a small commercial value. This is an exemption of up to 10% of the property valuation that can be granted to commercial, not industrial properties, just commercial properties, that meet the requirements set forth in the law. And that is, the businesses must have occupied the property as of January 1, 2011, and must have had no more than 10 employees certified by the Department of Employment, and a valuation of less than $1 million. A business which is one of several businesses within a commercial building would not be eligible. It would go to the property owner, not the business. Similar to the residential exemption, the levy does not change, and the exemption is borne within the commercial class, resulting in an overall increase of the commercial, industrial, and personal class, the value of tax. We are unaware of any qualifying business properties in town, so you really have nothing to work with on that one. The other item is a selection of a discount for open space. We don't have any discount for open space, because we don't have any open space. All our open space is under chapter lands in the commercial class, so we never have to worry about that. Those are the four items that you have to deal with. And we have three motions. That while they're not in the book, Mr. Puller very carefully went upstairs and made a motion sheet for me.
They're on the Select Board's motion sheet.
Huh?
Yeah. You don't have motions, do you?
We have.
We don't.
We have a motion.
I didn't have a motion.
Let's hope they match.
Yeah, we'll see. We'll see.
Good if Dave had a motion.
All right. Before we get to the motions, though-
So that's, if you have any questions, feel free to go ahead.
Okay. First questions from the Select Board. Ms. Burr?
I just want to thank Mr. Burgess again for having done this for several years now, and having watched it even before I was on the Select Board. The explanation just keeps getting tweaked and getting better and better every year. So, thank you. Having statements about the fact that, you know, Amherst has never voted to discount for open space in the past, because we don't have that kind of open space, like you just pointed out. I mean, those kinds of things seem really confusing to people, because they're like, "open space, we've got lots of open space." Thank you for that, and making those clarifications. Something we might want to add someday to the important terms section, something that sometimes confuses people, is the personal property concept. That personal property is all associated with businesses, as I understand it, and is self-reported? How does that work?
It is self-reported, but I want to make it, people understand, that while the apartment complexes are not considered commercial property for real estate purposes, for personal property, they are considered commercial property. So anything that they would have, such as machinery for lawns, gardens, laundromats, all the washers, dryers, and microwaves and the units, they're all personal property, and they would all be taxable. So they actually fall into a commercial point at that stage, when the real estate isn't. The person who has their own home does not pay on personal property. The only thing I wanted to make a note is that Amherst, several years ago, through a town meeting with the Select Board's help, voted that anyone with a value of $5,000 or less does not pay personal property tax. And that's cut out quite a few of the small mom-and-pop operations, the two and three family units, two family units, and small businesses. So Amherst has helped along the lines, business helped with that exemption.
And I'm sorry, I had another one. If that's okay? I believe you might have given a number, Mr. Burgess, but I'm not sure when you characterize new growth for us. Do you have a sense of, you know, just to, again, to give people some context, you know, seven new houses were built, 70 new houses were built.
The new growth this year is not all in the residential section. We've only had about five new houses built this year. But you've got to remember, in that same period, what's adding, what's saving our new growth this year? I had originally estimated, I think, $450,000, and we came in at just on or just over $500,000. I can't remember at the moment. But the 12 units behind Judy's came on this year, and the Lord Jeff came back on this year for the first time in a long time. And those were large increases. And as well as that, the utility companies came in with nearly $6 million in valuation, which is nearly $100,000 in taxes. So, that all helps.
Thank you. That's very useful.
New growth is actually up this year from last year.
Thank you. Ms. Stein?
When you have a mixed-use building, like the one behind Judy's, are the rental units above considered residential, and the ones below considered commercial? Or is the whole building considered commercial?
No. It's based on the percentage, and it's the, all of the property, all the residential will be classed as residential, and the commercial will be valued as commercial. On Judy's, it's not just that parcel, or just that building, because Judy's itself is part of that parcel, so that's why it's a mixed use. And it's very close to 60/40, I believe.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments from the Select Board?
Questions or comments from the public about the tax classifications? Okay. Before we close the public hearing, I'll just note a couple of other things that we often talk about, and I just don't want to be kind of skipped over here. Okay. The single versus the split rate, as Mr. Burgess mentioned, that if we were to go to a split rate, a split commercial rate, because we have about a 10% roughly, a commercial property percentage in town, the effect of the change is, as he mentioned, about, it's a, the effect is tenfold for every $300 approximately that that would save a residential property, that would increase a commercial property's cost by $3,000. And that's just so out of whack, that that's among the reasons that in the past, we have typically, we have only rejected that idea. The residential exemption, this is something that we talk about every year in varying levels of detail. This is something that works particularly well in communities that have vacation populations, second-home populations. In communities that don't have that, like we don't have that, it doesn't work particularly well. Sometimes folks say, "Okay, well, what about the fact that we have such a high student rental population?" Because typically, what we say is, among the impacts that it would have, is it would, it would favor homeowners, but then put a burden on rental properties. And at times like this, people might be looking to increase the burdens on rental properties. But, but there are various reasons that we have not gone along with that logic in the past. One of them is that it is an exemption up to, it's the 20%, right?
20%.
Of the value. So there's actually a tipping point for many properties. And in addition to burdening rental properties, which is not just students, of course, it's often low-income folks and others, it would, it has the tendency to make the, it makes older homes, not older homes, more expensive homes considerably more expensive. So we have always said that that might increase the incentive, especially for maybe an older person who's living in the old family homestead, or anybody else who is house-rich and cash-poor, that would increase their tax burden considerably. And so, again, it would not be, it would not be targeting any tax assistance, what's the word I'm looking for, tax relief, at all. It's a very broad brush that catches a bunch of unintended victims in it. And the third thing that we talk about in relation to that is, if we were to try it and then decide, "This just didn't work, it was a disaster," to switch back would be very complicated, because then people's tax bills, it would, it would be a vast increase in people's tax bills to get us back to this level of normal. So, and also, let's see, we already talked about small commercial exemptions, that we just don't have commercial properties that qualify for that in Amherst. And I think we covered everything else. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that all the usual things are on the table for anybody who's tuning in for the first time. With that, are there any further questions or comments before we close the public hearing?
All right, anyone from the Board of Assessors want to add anything to any of this? All right then, I will take a motion to close the public hearing.
I so move.
Second.
And all in favor of closing the public hearing at 7:01, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. All right, deliberation time for the questions before us. We have always done what we've always done and the circumstances don't seem to have changed at all. Would anyone care to try and persuade us to make a different decision than we've ever made on any of these? Mr. Hayden.
Yeah, I want to say again that the presentation that we were given with all of the ups and downs and the what-ifs is very helpful in reaffirming that we've made the right decision in the past, so.
Thank you. Anything else about the classification questions, any reason to consider changing at this time? All right, then Ms. Stein would like to make the motions.
I move that the select board adopt a minimum residential factor of one, equal tax rate for all classes of properties for fiscal year 2013, and that no open space discount be provided.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board not adopt a residential exemption for fiscal year 2013.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous.
I move that the select board not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2013.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, that's unanimous. Ms. Brewer.
I don't know how to make this comment without it just sounding like a platitude, so I guess it's going to sound like one. But I hope that people understand, despite the fact that this all goes very smoothly because we've done it a million times, we have a good structure to base it on. We take this tax rate very seriously. We realize it's high and we don't feel great about how high it is because we know it's hard for people, yet at the same time, we know it has to be what it is. So I guess, I don't want people to feel like, "Oh, we just blew right past that $20 bucks", whatever. We know it's a serious concern for people. And we are trying in all the different things that we do, talking about priorities for the budget, et cetera, to address, you know, making the most of what we've got associated with that. So while tonight was talking about the tax rate and all those underneath parts of it, we do recognize that it's also a substantial rate and we will do our best with it.
Thank you, that's a good point. And it's also important to note that this is going up by the allowable 2.5% that, under the state law for Proposition 2.5, plus the amount necessary to make up for the abatements, et cetera. But that amount does not keep pace with inflation and how much even the programs and services that we have this year will cost next year. So it's a very, it's a very complicated set of circumstances and leaves us fiscally challenged, which is why Mr. Misanti's budget process is about to get so exciting in the coming weeks, because the budget that he presents to us in January has to deal with all of these realities. Is there anything you'd like to comment on about this, Mr. Misanti?
No, I mean, I think that's a good point to make about, you know, it's an ongoing effort about how we might be in a position to have a situation where the tax rate per thousand is less. So it's, obviously it's spending restraint, but also, what's the appropriate mix in our tax base compared to the 90/10 residential/commercial split and all those kinds of things? So I just want to also thank Dave Burgess and his staff publicly for ongoing excellent work and the entire Board of Assessors, Marilyn, John and Carl Mailer, who's not here tonight, ongoing civic duty in a very important position. And also 2013 promises to be another exciting year, including the provision of assessing services to our neighbor in Pelham. We've negotiated a fee on that Dave has done nice work on.
Thank you very much. So thank you for all of your good work on this. Thank you for coming in again and...
Just to remind Mr. Misanti, I have one form there he needs to, have you all sign?
We will do that. I'll get that to you in the morning.
Well, it's fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so it is now 7:06. The next item on our agenda, it's a 7 o'clock item, a new taxi business for Christian Cab. Is anyone here for Christian Cab? All right, we'll come back to that, just in case he shows up. So our 7:05 item then is a request to petition the governor to close the power plant at Mount Tom. And to speak to that, we have former select board chair, Alyssa Campbell, and some colleagues with her. Welcome.
I have to say, I do some of these budget things on my condo board, so I know exactly what kind of things you're dealing with. I'm here today with Kim Selsnick and Drew Grandi, and we're here to talk about coal and air pollution. And we brought a visual aid, a map of the exceedances of air pollution standards in the one-hour permit in the area. As you can see, Mount Tom, Mount Tom itself, the Holyoke Range, Pelham Hills, et cetera. So I will let them have the microphone. Drew, and I'm the holder of the poster.
Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you, thank you the board for allowing us to come here tonight to speak about this issue. My name is Drew Grandi. I'm an organizer with the Sierra Club, working on the club's Beyond Coal campaign. The Beyond Coal campaign got started about 10 years ago when 150 new coal-fired power plants were proposed for the country. Communities around the country where those plants were proposed started organizing, started working to say, "This is not the future that we want for a community, it's not the future we want for our children, and it's also not the economy we want our hometowns based around." From there, 162 proposed coal plants have been stopped from coming online. And from that, from that point, the Beyond Coal campaign started working with other local communities to start retiring the existing fleet of coal-fired power plants that are out around the country, much like the Mount Tom coal plant here and just down the road in Holyoke. Mount Tom was built in 1960. It's a relatively small plant, about 146 megawatts, and it's also a very old plant. It's beyond, it's beyond its expected life cycle and we're taking a closer look at this plant and the effects it has on the communities. One of the biggest things that stuck out for us on Mount Tom is the situation, the position it's in, in Holyoke itself. As you know, Holyoke is a community full of a lot of first and second generation immigrants that have come to this country. And one of the biggest things we learned when we started talking with these families is that they would, a lot of them moved here from Puerto Rico and they said, "I moved here healthy, my kids were healthy, and within a month or two, we developed a cough, we went to the doctor and all of a sudden we're diagnosed with asthma. We came here healthy and now we have asthma." One of the people who worked with Vermina Perez, she moved here in 1982, three of her four children have asthma and 12 of her 16 grandchildren and great-grandchildren all have asthma. Once we started hearing more of these stories, we took, again, took another closer look at the Mount Tom coal-fired power plant. And we did, one of the things we noticed on it was that the Title V air permit, this is the permit that allows Mount Tom to essentially put its exhaust up into the air, was last issued in 2002. This month will mark five years since that permit expired. So that permit expired on December 31st, 2007. And what's happened since then is that there's been updates to clean air standards. And one of those clean air standards is the NACS, National Ambient Air Quality Standard for sulfur dioxide. Sulfur dioxide has been recognized by the EPA as an asthma irritant, and they've also set a level of, this 196 level right here of micrograms per cubic meter, so essentially a concentration of sulfur dioxide in a given volume of air.
I would just comment that unusually on this map, red is better than blue.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard for me to get it through my head, but...
Yeah, I think in the world of engineering, they decided that this is the color code they want to go with. But yeah, normally red is the worst, but in this one, red is the best and it works up to blue and purple up here. But you can see there are areas here where there is blue, there are blue and purples.
And they are the mountain ranges.
Yep, they are the mountain range, you know, recreation areas that people come to the area to spend some time in. But the rest of, a lot of these red and orange areas, especially in Holyoke and some in North Hampton, are areas where schools are located. And those, the children and older residents are the ones that are most at risk for this. But that 196 level is the level that the EPA has said, "This is air that is unhealthy to breathe. This is air that if you have asthma, five minutes exposure to this, you are at risk for developing asthma attack. And if you are healthy, if you're exposed to this for longer periods of time, you're at risk for developing asthma." So we worked with an engineering company out of Madison, Wisconsin, to do an air model on Pioneer Valley and on Mount Tom. And this is the results that they've come up with based on this new ambient air quality standard. So what they found is that there are numerous violations here. And one of the biggest things that they've said is, they kind of ran this model twice for us. This is the model you're showing with Mount Tom. To show you this model without Mount Tom, essentially we would just take this background map and hand it over to you, because we see these levels drop far below the unhealthy level. So we can pretty conclusively point to Mount Tom as the culprit for this right here. And essentially, what we're looking at is, the air in the Pioneer Valley is unhealthy. We've seen, over the summer, on a lot of the hot days, there were air alert days. The Department of Environmental Protection has issued air alert days for anyone of sensitive groups, and that's pretty much anyone, children or seniors, or anyone with any kind of breathing issue that may range from asthma to COPD to any kind of affliction worse than that. But those are the people that are at risk for this. And what this, what this standard says is that, we don't have an issue currently, you know, Mount Tom is meeting the expired permit that they're operating under. What we have, what we have is that we're asking Governor Patrick to have his Department of Environmental Protection update the air permit so that it complies, so that coal plant complies with all current air standards, including this ambient air quality standard here. So essentially what's happening is that Mount Tom is meeting the current permit, but the Pioneer Valley isn't meeting ambient air quality standards that are set forth by the EPA because of that, because of that coal plant. I've got a copy of the modeling report here I can pass on to the board. And I have an electronic copy that I can pass on to everyone afterwards as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions about that. But right now, I'll give it back over to Cam and I think any questions anyone may have, we'll be happy to answer at the end of that.
Hi, my name is Kim Selsnick. Thank you for allowing me to come speak on behalf of my generation who's very, very concerned about the environment. I am a student at Hampshire College and there and within the five college system, I study environmental science and environmental social justice. Through these studies, I pretty much spend my days learning about how activities such as coal burning power plants are leading us towards one of the greatest environmental disasters of human history. I've also learned in, through the environmental social justice component of my studies, that these plants are often put in low-income immigrant neighborhoods, such as the one in Holyoke. So, as far as I can tell, the coal team and the burning of coal and the not switching to renewable energies, of which we do have the technology and the mind power, is a losing game. This town, these colleges, Hampshire College particularly, is teaching me how to be progressive, how to be environmentally conscious and how to fight for social justice. I am asking for this town as a whole and this valley as a whole to fight against the grain in the same manner that it's teaching its students to. I have a letter here that we would like you all to sign, read it over, think about it, to Governor Patrick, asking him to retire this plant or at the least require them to operate under clean air permits that are up to date. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions or comments from these folks from the select board? Mr. Hayden.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. One is a very technical one. I'm looking at the map and it's granted, it's, you know, 15 feet away. There's quite a bit of granularity on that. I didn't realize there were that many sulfur dioxide monitoring stations. I only knew of two in the region. How do we, how do you get to such a fine map of the danger?
Keep in mind, I'm not a scientist or an engineer, but I can tell you that the way the modeling was done, it wasn't just from monitoring stations. What we were able to do is take actual data from EPA that the Mount Tom reports to the agency on the type of coal they're using, the number of hours that the scrubbers are being turned on while they're operating, which is, scrubber operation is less than operation of the plant. They don't always turn the scrubbers on. So using data that Mount Tom reports to the EPA and then using that within the model that the engineering firm has used, they were able to set up this map here.
So I, thank you. I mean, that's, I'm looking for something a little more technical than that. I understand that the model behind it and that there's similar models for mercury, which is another contaminant, and nitrous, and magnesium, manganese, there's all kinds of bad stuff that comes out of a coal stack. But, you know, I'm always a little bit, I want to be careful when we're presented with data, which is not, which is a model. I mean, there are facts here, there are real problems here, and I think they need to be honestly reported. There's another thing that I'd like to point out about this particular station. It's got a sludge pond, very similar to the one that collapsed and flooded town, I can't remember where it is now.
Kingston, Tennessee.
Yeah, so we have one of those too, and it has the exact same kind of earthen dike around it. And that leads me to my last question. One of the things that I'm proud of here in Amherst is that we recognize that we can't just eliminate 146 megawatts worth of generation without replacing it with something. And that thing is apt as not to be another coal-powered fire, power station someplace else, further away from towns like Amherst that are active and interested in this thing. You speak of social justice. So I'm proud that we have understood, and I'm hopeful when I look at the proclamation or at the request here, that we keep shutting the power plant down, whether it's a nuclear power plant in Vermont nearby, a coal pile plant, you know, here nearby, or coal plants in Ohio, which are not so nearby, but the air gets to us too, that we are actively replacing that with some, with renewables. You know, Governor Patrick has a very comprehensive program for the state, which is under some attack. In fact, it's under attack every time a project is proposed in places like Whately or Amherst. And we have to recognize that we can't just shut these things off. Yes, it's making our kids sick. Yes, it's threatening our river with the sludge. Yes, it's putting mercury into the air. But we can't just turn them off without doing whatever it is beyond coal. And I'm kind of hopeful that you're as active in talking about, you know, why natural gas may not be the exact best way to go. It's a nice stopgap for the meantime, why we have to support efforts for solar power and other renewables.
Thank you very much. Ms. Campbell, please speak into the mic, yeah?
I mean, I think no one disagrees, the Sierra Club does not disagree with anything you said, you know? We're actually asking at this point that the current air standards be enforced on this plant. That's what the letter is basically asking for. And of course, the Sierra Club has been out there supporting solar and wind installations here as well as other places. And like the town of Amherst, there's gotten some flak for it, generally about wind rather than solar, but, you know, I think we're all on the same side.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from the select board right now? Okay, so you've given us good information, you've given us a draft letter, which we're now just seeing for the first time. I think we need to sort of chew on this for a while. If we have questions for you, we will get back to you. If we have a new draft that we would like revised, and in fact, if you could send electronic versions of the materials you provided.
Where should I send that to?
To the select board address, which is selectboard@amherstm.gov.
You can send the...
The modeling report there as well.
The modeling report, too.
That would be great, yeah. Anything we could get electronically would be great. So in case we want to either adopt or revise the letter or anything like that, whatever our next steps are in the future, it would be easiest to have all those electronically. And if we get these to a next step such that it's on an agenda again, we will let you folks know.
Great. The other thing I do, Mr. Hayden, I can get you in touch with the engineering firm that did this for us, they can better answer your question than I could, as far as how the modeling was conducted.
That would be cool.
If you'd like that? Yeah, I can do that.
Same, amherstm.gov.
Yep.
Ms. Brewer.
Beyond the timeframe of five years ago...
Beyond the timeframe of five years ago, um, in terms of current timeframe, is there a particular deadline that you're looking to get letters in by, et cetera? Just in terms of our planning?
If we could do this, uh, in the next four weeks, I, I, I think would be, would be great. On last Tuesday, we just delivered 1,600 petitions from residents of Massachusetts to Governor Patrick, uh, asking him to, to act on, on, uh, renewing the, the air permits for Mount Tom.
And several towns have already sent a similar...
Yeah, we've seen, uh, Shute's Berry has, has, has sent a similar letter, uh, and then North Hampton, East Hampton are in the similar, kind of same steps as where you guys are right now. They've got maybe a two-week jump on you right now, but, uh, similar situation.
Competition.
Okay.
Yeah, right, right.
So after the first of the year would be still good enough?
Yep, should be good. Um, and just one other point, so as, as we're talking about retiring coal plants across the country, we are, we are, as you were saying, we are working to support clean renewable energy in other places. We've seen Mount Tom go from about 3,600 hours of operation, uh, four or five years ago, to only 800 in the first half of this year. So we're seeing that plant come down. Uh, and we're also working with the governor's administration to, to actively help push those clean renewable projects where, where, where it makes sense and where it's smart to do so. Whether that's through energy efficiency, we're proud to see Massachusetts be the number one energy efficient state in the country. Excited to see the governor out in this area in Florida today, uh, opening up the new wind project that happened there. We're also working with, uh, the governor's administration, also the federal government, with the, uh, the Boem process and, and, uh, for the offshore wind project in, uh, off of Massachusetts waters there as well. So if there's any other projects, uh, around the state, we're always happy to jump in. But also, if there's anything happening here in Amherst, please let us know how we can help you out with any kind of, uh, energy efficiency or clean renewable projects. We're always, we're always happy to, uh, to lend our voice to that and, and, and support anyone do, uh, working to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time and all your information. Um, so, Mr. Hayden, as someone who clearly has, uh, interest and knowledge about this, would you be willing to sort of take this to the next stage with us and, for us, rather? And anyone who is, uh, has a keen interest, as Mr. Hayden does, to consider the letter, recommend the next step for us? If, if there is one, you know, just kind of let me know if this should be on the agenda either next time or in January or whatever. Mr. Hayden?
Yes, because it is important.
Okay. So you'll, you'll, you'll shepherd this to the next steps for us?
I will.
And with Mr. Wald.
Yeah, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Passing along the report to Mr. Hayden also?
Oh, yeah, sure, great. Okay, good. So, Mr. Hayden will bring this back to us for next action, and anyone who wants to have a hand in that before it gets to us, get with Mr. Hayden. Okay, moving along. Sir, are you here from Christian Cab?
Yes.
Terrific. Please come forward.
Yeah.
And, could, what's your name?
My name is Daniel Okorafor.
Welcome. So you are starting a new taxi business in Amherst?
Yes.
And you are aware that as of January 1st, we are changing our taxi regulations and requiring all cabs to have built-in fare meters?
Meters, yeah, I'm aware of that.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, all right, so, um, so this gentleman's application has gone through all of the regular processes in the office and with the chief of police, and is being recommended to us for, um, for approval. Do folks have questions for, could you pronounce your last name again for me?
Okorafor.
Okorafor, thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Okorafor? Mr. Hayden?
Maybe not directly, but maybe for us. When are there enough taxi cab companies in town? Well, how will we know?
It's a good question.
I don't think it's now, I, I, but, but it's, it's one that, that we're, I know we're grappling with this and some other types of licenses. And, there's a lot of these.
Right. So there's not a direct answer. What we do know with the new regulations is that we have the ability to limit the number.
Yes.
That's specific in, in the new regulations. Um, I think we won't know how the taxi industry is functioning in Amherst until we get a sense of how the transition goes. I think that the metering of cabs is probably going to shake out, if not companies, certainly vehicles, because we've kind of raised the expense and the level of investment that's required to, to operate legally here. So the, the question will remain a question for a while. Ms. Brewer?
Yeah, along those lines, um, there's, it seems like there's always town meeting where we're trying to plan, well, when should we follow up on this? Oh, wait, town meeting time. No, wait, that's town meeting time, too. How about, like, June, maybe? Because, maybe even July? Because that would give us time for, you know, people to have actually installed these things and then said, you know what, I'm not going to bother with that van anymore, et cetera. And like you said, some of this fallout, end of the school year, et cetera. Because I think it will be good to have a sense, you know, before the next whole year starts of licenses, of where things are going, rather than just assuming a whole year will go by. So I don't know, maybe July or something?
That's a good point. I can plug it into the calendar, so we'll make sure to be getting feedback from, uh, from the police folks and from the inspections folks about how the new regulations are, are working out there in the field. Okay. But for Mr. Okorafor's specific, uh, application right now, so he'll be, he'll be running under the current regulations for the next couple of weeks, uh, and then the new regulations as of 2013. Mr. Musante?
Just, the, the application is actually for the new calendar year, beginning January 1.
Oh, I apologize. So you're not going to start having cabs in Amherst this month at all?
Oh, January 1, yeah.
Okay, so this is a new license, so this way it skips the renewal process, so that makes good sense. Okay, so you're, you'll be operating entirely under the new regulations, which presumably you've seen and are aware of. All right. Mr. Hayden?
I, I see that you're the first driver for the, the company.
Yes.
That's what I understand here.
Yes.
It's been a long time since I've been able to ask the question. How well do you know your way around town?
Yeah, I, I lived in Amherst for 24 years. I just moved to South Hadley, um, last, I mean, in, uh, 2007. So I went to UMass and I lived in Amherst for 24 years. So I know the area very well.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Okorafor? Ms. Stein, would you like to make the motion?
Sure. I move that the Select Board approve a new taxi business license for Daniel Okorafor, doing business as Christian Coach Taxi, 13 Montague Road, Amherst, MA, for the license year to begin January 1, 2013, through December 31st, 2013.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. Congratulations, good luck to you, and, uh...
Very much.
Look forward to your new business. Mr. Hayden?
Thank you. Drive safe, and thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. We have, speaking of town meeting, we have our, uh, semi-annual, uh, town meeting wrap-up discussion. Uh, we try and do this at the first Select Board meeting following the wrap-up of each town meeting during the year, um, to just talk about particularly our process part of it, but also any other thoughts or suggestions we have about how town meeting went and how it might be improved for the future. So, before it gets banished from our minds by, uh, by other things, we, uh, we try and have this conversation promptly. So, uh, we did just finish town meeting. It finished in three sessions. This time, we started, uh, we, we did our experiment of starting at seven o'clock, and I have not gotten any formal feedback from Town Meeting Coordinating Committee on that yet. Uh, they are looking for folks to return the surveys that we included in their packets at, uh, rather, TMCC included in their packets and made available during town meetings. So anyone who's watching this, who's a town meeting member, is encouraged to get their feedback to Town Meeting Coordinating Committee about how they felt about the seven o'clock start time. So, otherwise, how do folks feel? Mr. Hayden?
About the seven o'clock start time, um, I might notice that, uh, quorum call every night, well, I mean, the Select Board was late one night, but otherwise, the quorum call was, was pretty close to, to seven o'clock. I think the latest was like seven, quarter past seven or something like that. So that kind of sounds like an endorsement to me from town meeting members themselves.
Thank you. Yeah, so I'll note, uh, you're right, the quorum call is around sort of 10 past-ish nightly, which means that, uh, that was 20 minutes before 7:30 that we had three nights, which is an hour, which could have been the difference between coming back or not for, for our session. So, thank you, good point. Other thoughts about town meeting? Ms. Brewer?
Um, I, I think it might be useful to speak with the planning board, and, and I don't mean that the chair just has to talk to her husband, even though I guess they're occasionally allowed to do that, but perhaps in a slightly more formal fashion, um, on two issues. One is whether or not it seems worthwhile, given the experience we just had, of trying to set the citizen zoning petition deadline even earlier, which I know sounds awkward to people, but nonetheless, that's, there's no requirement to file citizen petitions. One can just work through the planning board. If one wants to have something that one is sure is the one's own, then, um, it doesn't seem unreasonable to perhaps add even more time into that process, assuming the planning board thinks that would help them in their process, particularly when they have very similar sorts of things going on. It's unusual that they would have completely separate things going on where, you know, they, they have no idea that petitioners are working on something, and they wouldn't even attempt to be working on something at the same time. But to get a better sense of that, to see if there's a point to making that earlier, so that it doesn't feel quite so rushed toward the end with, you know, rewrites up to and including on the floor. The other aspect to that, that I think is just always complicated for zoning, but, like, the longer I serve in town meeting, I guess the more it comes back to me, is that if people are going to question zoning when we get, um, to the actual articles, rather than just saying, sure, sure, whatever the planning board wants, um, then they need to remember that those books, those zoning bylaw books, have actual useful information in them. And then so if there's a way that we can, if, you know, planning board wants to work with us in some sort of joint education effort, or bring TMCC into it, but there were people who're saying, well, does that mean I can do this anywhere? It's like, no, it says right here, you can do it in RBC, you can do it here and here. And then they're like, what's that mean again? And, you know what? Actually, as much as we try and put into the warrant, you can't assume that that's enough. You have to be able to put it into the bigger context. And so I think sometimes when people go to that very first, if they have the chance to go to the moderator's education session that says, here's your zoning bylaw, here's your town meeting, blah, 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 but then they forget, and that those things all fit together, and that it's kind of hard to take it completely out of context and say, oh, I don't actually know what that means, because I don't know what the definition section actually says before this, and what the section before it, and what the section after it looks like. So, um, you know, personally, uh, zoning is not my most thrilling aspect of my life, and I'm willing to concede some of those points to people I consider more expert on the subject. And one can't prevent all questions, and one doesn't want to. But in terms of just people understanding their role as a town meeting member, I think there needs to be a better grasp of the fact that zoning things are complicated because they take place inside a much bigger picture than we necessarily see within an individual warrant article. And although they don't have to memorize the whole book, they have to be able to know that there are different sections of it that they'll need in order to understand. So, future education effort.
Okay. So I think that, that your point is kind of largely about, um, town meeting members doing sufficient homework, just like we want them to do homework on the budget, you know, read the, the, um...
Right.
Finance committee report, um, before spring town meeting. The zoning bylaw is an important part of your preparation for zoning articles. Additionally, there is a zoning primer document...
Yes.
...that perhaps should be, uh, encouraged, uh, for, to be circulated more, and just kind of remind people about those, because that is a...
Good point.
That's a very helpful document. And, uh, and you're right, it's, it's full of kind of arcane detail, very complicated and interrelated detail, and, um, just to have a refresher on it, for folks to kind of do their own personal refresher course on that before, uh, e- each town meeting could be helpful. Okay. Um, as far as the citizen zoning petition calendar stuff, um, you'll be happy to know that my husband and I actually try to talk about things other than town.
I'm so glad.
At the cost of opportunity, so we do minimize these things. Um, so, yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with what I talk about, talk to him about. And in fact, what we'll do with these suggestions is what we do with them always, which is we kind of give the whole thing to TMCC, but also give, um, pass along the relevant elements to whatever other bodies it is relevant to. So, um, so these two elements of, um, that are relevant to the planning board, I will, I will pass along to them as well. Uh, and anything else we come up with? Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, I would like to just, uh, point out or recall, I, I found myself, um, going back to the, uh, planning department's, um, um, presentations for, for those articles. I mean, that, those are very, very helpful in at least steering you into the right place if you want to do more research. So I just want to point out, I want to be appreciative of that, and I don't know, um, if there's, if there's some way, um, I don't know, to have, have more to them, to help people not have to flip through their zoning. I mean, I know the rules, sort of. Um, I spent a lot of time with them, uh, but still, I found myself going to the report and saying, oh, yes, I remember that now, I, I'm going to just go bone up on that for a second and make sure I, I've got that clear. So I found those to be very helpful, not unlike the paragraphs after each section and the, the budget that each department puts in. But still, um, I don't know if we want to, uh, encourage more velocity there or something, um, beyond saying, I appreciate them, they, they really do work. Are very helpful.
Okay. Mr. Wald?
Yeah, in the, in the same vein, you know, these things are always a two-way street, and I think we need as both better communication and instruction on the part of town officials, and better homework on the part of town meeting members, which we know is difficult. And Mr. Hayden's in an unusual position because he chaired the planning board and immersed himself in these things the rest of us are still learning, uh, some more, some less. And I guess one of the things that, that concerns me is that zoning is by nature complicated, and all too often, we hear people say they can't support something because it's too complicated to understand. We've got to figure out what the problem is, you know, to what I said, it's the thing itself or the communication. I think in Egypt right now, they're being asked to pass a constitution with something like 230 clauses by December the 15th, and you don't want to be in that position. Uh, we can't keep putting things off forever, too. So I want to pick up something that Ms. Brewer mentioned, I believe, at one of the Select Board meetings during town meeting, uh, with regard to petitioner articles, because, you know, it's wonderful that citizens are so involved in Amherst, that they bring forward articles, they begin to try to learn zoning imperfectly sometimes, but they make the effort, and they get something in shape that the planning board can deal with it, that we can deal with it. But Ms. Brewer mentioned that there are alternative routes, and one of these, of course, is not to bring forward your own article, but simply to approach the planning board and say, here's what we want to do. In other words, maybe it's less important whose name is on it and where it comes from than what the result is. Because if you look at the actual votes in town meeting, the ones, if I'm not mistaken, that had the highest degree of collaboration between town hall, that is, town manager's office, Select Board, Planning Board, and so forth, passed, and others tend to get referred back, we're not sure. And especially given that we've got a two-thirds, uh, threshold, uh, you know, success is in our mutual interest. So that might be one route to try. You know, not just earlier submissions of citizen articles, but earlier conversation with planning board about joint efforts. Just a thought.
Thank you. And I'll note that, um, part of the, uh, planning board's process is to hold, I believe they do it twice a year also, is a zoning forum...
Right.
...where they are collecting input to help, uh, add to their list and, and figure out their priorities for things going forward. So, um, so it's very important also for folks to be, to be participating in that if they want to make their priorities known. Okay. Ms. Stein?
Uh, we had talked about a consent agenda, and I don't know what I would have put on it, but it didn't come to pass, so I was wondering to whom we should resuggest that. So maybe for the, um, annual town meeting in the spring, it could happen.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that point. So, yes, we did, we talked about the consent calendar, recommended its consideration for usage last time. That is something that's under the moderator's control, and he needs to have that published, I believe it's 10 days prior. It's not a spur-of-the-moment decision. When we got our feedback from TMCC, they said they didn't have a problem with it, which I think was good to know. What I think would actually be useful, if we're going to kind of change course and go the consent calendar route, it would be good for TMCC to back that and to encourage its use, and so that they're kind of preparing folks ahead of time about what this means, and here are the things that are part of it, and here's how you get more information, et cetera. Because that will be something that's different for the body, so it needs some introduction. So I think that, personally, I think TMCC needs to do more than not oppose it. They would really need to support it and kind of champion it if that were to have its greatest chance of success going forward, because as we know, anyone can pull something out of the consent calendar. And I believe the last time it was used, which was probably 2007, it just stopped being used, because people were always objecting to the stuff that was in it. They wanted it all pulled out, and with, I think, really inadequate reasons for that being, "Oh, well, there are always new town meeting members, you know, people might not understand what we're voting on." Well, yes, but that's what the Finance Committee report is for, and that's what the warrant review is for. There are all kinds of ways to get your questions answered, everything is very well explained. At the same time, you do have the opportunity to ask questions about anything you want. So if something should be pulled out of the consent calendar, then it should, but just kind of a blanket, "Oh, some people might not understand," isn't quite a good enough reason. So it's reasons like that, that I think it would be really helpful for TMCC to get behind the what and why of the consent calendar, if that were to be successful. But I appreciate your bringing that up again. Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, I might, on that point, I just, I did take a good, hard look at the warrant when we first received it, to try to think of how we could possibly group anything in that particular warrant into a consent calendar. And they were disparate enough that I think that would have been difficult at best, as most of the things, maybe except for not paying the bills that we don't owe, really did require a discussion. So that's in reverse order. Another point I'd like to make is that I appreciate that despite the complexity of some of the articles that we're looking at, there was much less of the confusion expressed by members of town meeting this time than in times before. I just wanted to appreciate, I know that a significant number of town meeting members spent a lot of time, you know, working and trying to figure these things out before they voted, and I think Mr. Wald is correct to point out how well that works, and how valuable that effort is, and that we appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Okay, I'll note that personally, I think that we do need to look at, and I'll be meeting with the town manager and Ms. Rousseau in the office about the calendar in general. And I don't know how much of it, as Ms. Brewer's point to, how much of it was about the citizen petition articles, and how that kind of changed things. But our process was rougher going into it. I mean, it really emphasized to me how much we do not want to be taking positions on articles at the middle school. In thinking about the votes, I mean, it really, we're not able to give due diligence to things when we're making a decision, when we're sitting there going, "Okay, yeah, we've got to be in there in five seconds, so yeah, mm, okay, how about we take no position?" Or, "Yes, sure, we support it." Like, that's just, that's not fair to us, it's not fair to town meeting. And I think that some of our decisions were rushed that way, because we were taking the path of least resistance. We needed to get done and get in there. And so I don't know how much the calendar part, by changing the deadlines, could figure into that. I don't know how much of it maybe is improving our communication to, say, petitioners about what our needs are, in terms of trying to take a position on things. And obviously, I mean, it is the system that we all have to work on it and work within it, and sometimes it's just imperfect, and maybe we just sort of had a perfect storm of imperfections, if you will, this time. But if there are ways that the calendar can be tweaked, for example, even at the beginning of our process, we always start taking positions on articles before we sign the warrant. We've been doing this for as long as I've been on Select Board. But for some reason, we didn't have enough materials ahead of time this time, and I don't know what the problem was with that. I'm not sure if people were not getting communicated to that they needed to have their packet materials, or if I was doing a bad job of setting up which articles we were going to deal with at what time, because their materials weren't ready. So there's just kind of a general, like, sitting back and going, "Okay, what just happened? And how do we make it better than needs to happen?" So if you have any particular thoughts either now or later about the calendar part of it, that should feed into that discussion, then definitely let me know, because that will be important to me. Ms. Stein and then Mr. Hayden?
One of the things that made it difficult, but I think it's okay, was the fact that some of the articles kept changing.
Right, sure.
And there wouldn't have been much we could have done till they got to their most completely changed form, and actually became considerably short, which helped.
Right. So that's part of it, like, the process is what it is, and obviously-
That's right.
-that needs to be able to happen, and so we can't deal with every eventuality.
Exactly.
But are there some of them that we could have anticipated better? And so I think on our end, that there probably is. And maybe we also need a better mechanism for, you know, instead of a rushed decision, maybe we just don't even bother, you know? Maybe we just say to town meeting, you know, "Not only are we taking no position, we're taking no position because we just didn't have the time to adequately consider this. It's nobody's fault, it's just that's how this has ended up." But rather than sitting there, you know, talking about it as though we're being thorough, when really, we're just scratching the surface, and then we go in and make some kind of a rushed vote that maybe we're not all comfortable with having been ready to take the vote. I'm not sure we added any value, and in fact, sometimes we might be providing misdirection to town meeting if they think we've considered this more thoroughly than we did. So just kind of weighing all of those pieces is something we'll try and do better. Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, I was going to notice that the articles that we were most rushed about were the ones that were changing most, right to the end. I also wanted to comment is that there'll never be enough time. I mean, let's be a little bit careful about imagining, you know, a nirvana where we can get it all done and have nice ribbons on the packages before town meeting.
For sure, and that's an excellent point. So, you know, I say this all the time, that anything that we do, that we've been doing over and over again, is a question of, are we doing it by accident, or are we doing it on purpose? And so if we're doing it on purpose, then that's good, and if we're doing it by accident, and we shouldn't be doing it that way, then let's change it. So we do sort of always use the same calendar, and just sort of move up the dates, et cetera. But if there are ways, especially from what we learned from this, and really, one of the key things was about the materials that we had ahead of time when we needed them. And so making sure that that's very clear, particularly to petitioners, just to, because it's part of all of the, it's part of all of the different kinds of preparations that are happening. So I want to be very clear that I'm not in any way criticizing, as I know my colleagues are not, the petitioners and the timing that happened here, and everything that happened at the end of the process in particular, was happening at the end, because it was the end of the process. But anything we can do to improve the front of the process, to kind of bring us to a better place at the end, then we will try and do that. So, yes, Ms. Rain?
I also don't want us to dismiss the value of the Select Board's position. I mean, we are responsible for taking maybe a different view, the other view, than other boards might be, and I think it's important that we help town meeting as much as we can make their decision on these things, so. I don't want to throw that away.
Yeah, and that's an important point, and we noticed that a couple of times with the articles at the end. When Select Board and Planning Board was in agreement with the petitioners, that was a powerful statement to folks. The Select Board made a different recommendation on one of the articles than the Planning Board did at the end. Again, that was a really rushed decision, and as soon as we were done, I was like, "Wait a minute, that wasn't what we should do." And that really kind of confused-
Sorry about that.
...town meeting, I think. But again, that was part of our being rushed. And so I think it was a very good learning experience for us to have gone through it that way, you know, and with no ill results, really, but it gives us a lot to try and improve on, to think about, trying to improve on for next time. Others? Okay, so it's really scheduling stuff, taking a look at that, encouraging more, more and better use of kind of the preparation materials that we have, potentially that zoning primer thing, the zoning bylaw, the Planning Board reports, and whether they might even have more detail perhaps. Consent calendar. Okay. Anything else people are thinking of right now? Ms. Brewer?
This is actually not within our purview, but I heard some just random comments that check-in was not smooth every night. And so it would, it might be worth just checking in to find, checking in with the check-in, to see if there was something we could have done that would have made their lives easier, because it just seemed a little bit more, a lot more people standing in the hall, and a lot less people getting materials, rather than the kind of usual just flow that tends to go on.
Yeah. Maybe that might be another-
Something got tripped up somewhere.
That might be another information opportunity, because I think that started happening last spring, and I think that that was part of, once we stopped needing tally cards-
Cards.
...for every new night. So I think that there might be some confusion about what you're doing when you're checking in, whether you need to, yada, yada, yada. So maybe just, maybe part of it is communication, and I don't know what else is happening there, because, of course, we don't check in, but, Mr. Hayden?
Which brings me to a question, I guess, more of a question to ask. I'm wondering how well the cards are working out. I mean, there were a couple of, you know, sort of Harrison had to stop and hand stuff out and make those arrangements, which is fine, I mean, it's just a ton of paper that was not used. But I just want to sort of maybe check in to make sure that we're on the right track with that still?
I wonder with who? Who would know if that's working or not? Like, so as a body, we have never yet gone beyond our cards.
It would make sense for me to follow up with the town clerk-
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
...if issues were identified, if any.
Well, there's that.
Other thoughts on this subject at this moment? Very well, if you think of anything else, let me know, and we'll put it on the agenda again for next time. In the meantime, I will summarize this discussion, it will be in your list tomorrow, or whenever I get that to you, and I will send that to TMCC and other appropriate folks. Ms. Brewer?
Not that I can imagine there's a member of the public who watches Select Board meetings who doesn't already know that Harrison's retiring.
Oh, thank you.
But while I'm sure someone would make much grander remarks than I would, beyond thanking Harrison for his many years of service, I think that one of the things that people don't recognize is that the Select Board Chair, the Finance Committee Chair, Town Manager, Town Manager's Office, and the Moderator do an immense amount of work behind the scenes, organizing this every time around. And of course, everybody has their own style, and it'll be different. So that will be part of what we're moving into, too, is, you know, depending on who runs, depending on what ideas they have, that might bring us, you know, a new consent calendar idea, but it might also change some other things. So, more challenges ahead.
Yes, indeed, that's an excellent point, and thank you for just the opportunity to also remark on the fact that this was, as Harrison Gregg announced, his final town meeting session as moderator, unless we get, we call another special town meeting between now and May 6th, then let's hope we don't do that.
We can't think of an excuse to do that?
Sure, we better not think of an excuse. But Harrison Gregg has served as town moderator for 19 years now. That's an extraordinary run of service in an incredibly difficult job. Not only does he, is he responsible for running town meeting, but he also has the appointments of the Finance Committee and other things that come up, that he is the appointing authority for. For example, the Regional School District Planning Committee that Town Meeting established a year ago, that Ms. Brewer is the representative to. So I was saying to Mr. Musanti, Mr. Hayden, before the meeting started, it's a very difficult job, it's a very intense job, and it's one that typically, you know, when you're doing it really well, people don't notice, because you're doing it really well. And so they kind of take that for granted, and it's only when you trip up every now and then that people notice, and that's what gets all the heat. So that really makes it extra difficult. And he really has just done an extraordinary job for all of these years, and he's the face of town meeting.
Exactly.
It's really going to be very different, and wow, incredible. And just in general, thank him so much for his service, and it's been a heck of a run. Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, I'd like to also, sort of to pile on, if you will, to remark on the quality of the service that he did render to Town Meeting, to the point that it was recognized by his colleague moderators, and he's chair, or will have been chair, of the state town moderators' secret cabal, whatever it is.
Right, yes, he was president of the Moderators' Association-
President, I'm sorry.
...11 years ago. And anyone who is interested enough in town government that you're watching this meeting, but you might have missed the town meeting, definitely go to the Amherst Media website, or look on YouTube or whatever, but Amherst Media has put together a great clip of the farewell speech at the end. And the moderator read some wonderful remarks that he had written upon becoming president of the Moderators'-
In fewer than three minutes.
...Association, yes. And it was, it was very powerful, it was a very meaningful way to close his term of service, and it was really lovely for the body to have the opportunity to appreciate him in that way. That has got to be the longest-standing ovation I've ever seen, I think. So that was lovely. So do check that out, that is a separate clip of video, in addition to being part of the whole video of that town meeting night. So, all right, thank you. Anything else on town meeting? Very well, moving right along. Next up, we have Town Manager's Report.
Great, thank you very much. Want to update you on a number of issues, including Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods Working Group. You know that I appointed a work group that has now 17 members, representing a wide spectrum of interests on neighborhood issues, most notably related to issues related to rental properties. We have a work group, I've asked Dave Zomack to chair. We've got UMass representatives, neighborhood, multiple neighborhood representatives, Ms. O'Keefe representing the Select Board, Sandra Anderson from Planning Board. We have public safety leaders, health director, planning staff, some, one or two students we think will be appointed in the days ahead. We've had our first meeting last week on November 27th, very ambitious, but I think achievable, charge, which is to develop specific recommendations for review by me, and then consideration for spring town meeting, related to rental registration and property, rental property inspection protocols, and then also looking at our foreign-related persons bylaw, and offering suggestions, if any, on how to further improve that bylaw. So very ambitious. We had a very excellent meeting last week. People are engaged. There's a website that is growing by the day. If you go to the homepage of the town website and click on Living tab, you'll see the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods webpage, all the background information for our efforts in this area, progress reports from departments, and the work, and the backup documentation that the work group is looking at are being posted as we go along. Their next meeting is tomorrow, and they'll be working up calendar and some other things, and really getting into the nitty-gritty with any number of best practices, examples from other college towns, and other experiences from the members that they want to bring to bear on improving our systems and protocols, and also specific suggestions from the neighborhood folks who are active on this effort with us. So I'm very optimistic. I think it's off to a good start, and they'll be very, very busy over the next two to three months, and we can, you can expect to see, I think, some action recommendations at the spring town meeting. Related to that-
I'll just add a couple of things to that.
Sure.
I'm sorry, were you going to move on to a different subject?
I was going to talk about security details.
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll just add a couple of things about the Safe and Healthy Work Group before you get into that. The, he's absolutely right, it was a great meeting, it is a very ambitious plan and timeframe, but I'm very confident we'll be able to do it, and in fact, I promised Town Meeting that we would, and I have every intention of fulfilling that promise. So folks know, this is a working group that has a ton of work to do. It is a public meeting, they happen in this room, people are welcome to attend. Because there's so much work to do, public comment is not being taken during the meetings, but public comment is encouraged by email. Anyone can give any thoughts to the group that they want by either emailing Mr. Zomack, whose email is all over the town website, or myself, who, if you don't have my personal email address, you can certainly send it to the Select Board, and I will take that to the group. So, and it's possible that a Safe and Healthy Work Group email is going to be set up for that purpose as well. The other thing that's going to happen is at certain points, when we get the draft regulations into certain forms, we're going to have specific meetings to hear public feedback about them, and that schedule will be determined either tomorrow or at the meeting next week. But before long, as soon as that schedule is available, that will be widely publicized, so people know when exactly they can, they can come in and be heard on the specifics of the draft regulations to date. And as I said, any comments along the way, please feel free to be emailing them to us, and we just can't take the time during the meetings to hear all of those. As Mr. Musanti said, the website is full of documentation, in fact, it's being set up like the Select Board packets. So it's terrific, you look at the meeting, and you can look at all of the information. So we're trying to make all of the same information that the group is using available to anyone interested in the public, just in our process or in commenting. And I think that's all I have to add to that. Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, so, thank you.
Great. Okay. I did want to spend a moment updating the board. You had asked a while back now, how about, tell us about security details that some residents or groups of residents in particular neighborhoods have hired or are thinking of hiring, and how do they interact? What's their role? How do they interact with the Amherst Police? Where are- We're aware of three neighborhood groups presently that have security, hired security agencies. A group in the Lincoln and Fearing Street areas as well as Coles Lane. Coles Lane, Hobart Lane area. Puffton and Townhouse also have private security that, who are employees of those rental properties. Most work evenings, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, between nine PM and three AM. There is regular dialogue between security agencies and the Amherst Police and that's strongly encouraged. The Amherst PD meets regularly with security personnel discussing appropriate protocols. There are written reports that are typically done by the agencies to their clients, which are the neighborhood groups. In this case, again, with upfront communication, those are shared regularly with the Amherst Police. The bottom line on this is that they really try to act as the eyes and ears of residents, looking at foot traffic, you know? Large house parties, disturbances, et cetera. Patrol officers and the security agent, agencies themselves are encouraged to have dialogue with each other. I have witnessed that on some of my ride-alongs with the Amherst Police, that there's a lot of, you know, hey, what's going on, updates that go on over the course of the evening or getting, notifying, hey, you might want to, you know, we hear there might be a larger gathering at such and such an address, just keep an eye on that. But also making clear that they do not have police powers, these security agencies. That's an important distinction that both residents and the agent, agencies need to know. They cannot act as a complainant for things like noise disturbances. They can alert residents and the police about potential problem addresses over the course of their shifts. And so there's an ongoing effort by Chief Livingstone and his people to have that dialogue ongoing. If there are specific questions, certainly having people contact me or Amherst, the chief's office at the police department. If you want additional background is entirely okay.
Ms. Brewer. Great, I think, and, and maybe, I don't want to make Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods encompass every possible thing we could ever think of, but perhaps particularly with, I'm so glad the students are going to be able to be involved in that effort. I know it's difficult to engage them in a big project even when they're busy with everything else they do. But I just want to make sure that, that we're keeping the lines of communication open with the various groups that are working with student renters on campus and getting them educated about how to be a good runner, how to be a good neighbor, that they also understand the role of these security folks. Because it seems like, if anything, we will continue to have them for a while rather than not have them and just so that people understand what role they do play, that they're not, as it sounds like, they are not coming up and knocking on the door and saying, I'm going to call the police if you guys don't settle down or I'm going to write to the landlord and say that you can't be here anymore because I hear you being noisy. It's, it's not quite that strong of a position. Like you say, it's more of an eyes and ears thing. It's a heads up to the police when something's happening around. It's a heads up to the property owners if there's a particular area that's an issue. But it's not, they're not complainers, I guess, like was the way you phrased it. And I think it's important for the students to not, not so that they disrespect them, so, but so that they understand where they fit into the big picture.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for Mr. Musanti? All right, moving along.
Next, I do want to spend a couple of minutes reviewing with you, as we typically do during December, in the hours and minutes after the conclusion of Town Meeting, get back to working with staff on budget proposals that I'll be submitting in a formal way for the next fiscal year that begins in July. I'll be submitting those on January sixteenth to the select board and the finance committee. And I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of kind of what I'm thinking about at this point. It's very much under development and it's a work in progress, which is normal for December. But you know, back in October with our traditional preliminary projections, Sandy Poehler, the finance director, was talking about this next cycle being hopefully more of a slow and steady kind of a process. And I think what we've been focusing on as we put together our budget proposals on a preliminary way for next year is really focusing on making sure that we're budgeting realistically for known costs. You know that the big picture as it stands now is that after years of cuts, we think we might get, you know, even a modest increase in state aid and then our allowable local revenue increase. And that, after we apply what we know are some of our fixed obligations are for next year, that leaves increases of roughly three percent on average available for town, school, library. That also assumes a capital budget increase in terms of a share of the levy going up to seven percent of the levy from six and a half percent of the levy, which is worth a couple hundred thousand. So those are kind of the baseline assumptions. So known costs. I want to start with what has been a growing share of our budget, although in the last couple of years has been more stable, as you saw in the ten-year fiscal trend report back in October. Health insurance, back in October, we were talking about potentially a two and a half percent increase. I'm going to firm up a recommendation before January sixteenth, but it is quite possible I'll be able to recommend a second consecutive year of no premium increase. The trends, knock wood, health claim trends, knock wood, continue to be favorable. That plus what's been done on moving the retired teachers onto the town plans. And there's a savings to most of them and a savings to the schools as a result help. So that is different from October and it's a good thing. It's a good news kind of category. So I'll, I'll have something firmer as we get closer to January sixteenth, but I wanted to put out, that out there. There are other insurance items that we need to budget for every year, property casualty, liability, all kind of the basics. Workers' comp, we're self-insured. There'll be some modest increases there, but nothing, nothing outrageous, but we just need to account for those. I'm looking at things like caseload on veteran services. We think you may, we may have a small increase there. And we're waiting to see what our cherry sheet state aid reimbursement, which is typically seventy-five percent of those costs eventually being reimbursed, whether that's affected for the upcoming fiscal year. We're not going to know that on January sixteenth, so I think I'm going to go with what we know on the spending side on that. We're looking at things like human resources, refocusing on things like employee training, having a more defined and systemic training protocol. So you'll see some specific recommendations on that, some of which have a cost applied to it. More realistic for our known costs, solid waste on the enterprise fund side. It falls into that category. There are cost obligations. There's very little fund balance remaining in that account and there's a cost to providing our existing services at the transfer station, et cetera, that, so we'll be looking at, at the fees for that with the goal of trying to have it be as close to self-supporting as possible by the users of the service. Circling back to Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods focus, you can expect to see specific recommendations in my inspection services budget proposal. As we've, Rob Mora, our new building commissioner, has hit the ground running and has looked at restructuring the workday of staff, restructuring the workload and then taking a look at what we're able to get to, which is most things in a more timely and consistent way. But looking at workload ahead on some of the baseline inspection needs that are out there in the community. There will not yet be ready, specific recommendations related to inspection, services, needs related to the Safe and Healthy Neighborhoods. And that will be fleshed out as we get a little more specific about quantity and timing and pace of the inspection program. That will be mapped out over the next three or four months in the form of a proposal. So you're not going to see the magic proposal on January sixteenth because it's very much a work in progress. But you can expect to see other, other changes in, within inspection services that I think will be a further improvement to their ability to do what they need to do. Again, the thing that you probably just think about all the time is OPEB. I know one of your favorite subjects, long-term liabilities. Again, as we're in a better position to think about our long-term needs and, and begin to deal with them as Town Meeting did with the extra state aid we received this year as kind of a down payment on OPEB. There is no reason, we think, to wait on budgeting for OPEB-related costs in our enterprise funds, most notably water and sewer, which is, I forget what the percentage is. It's under twenty percent of our total obligation, but it's the share of the workforce. We think we're in a position to begin meeting those long-term obligations from water and sewer rates. And you can expect to see no or a very small increase in rates for water and sewer, which will be the second such year with that. So I just wanted to give you, there'll be progress on OPEB in the budget. I'm also working on some of our structural gaps, so-called, in the budget. For example, the fact that we have essentially a one crew within the DPW that for many years now has been funded by capital project monies, which is not a sustainable or a desirable strategy long-term. It also provides the town and the DPW with a lot less flexibility about allocating those personnel for more routine maintenance work because they're busy working on projects, which is paying their salary. So we think with our green community status and the installation before the end of the fiscal year of LED efficient streetlights, that will generate a lot of electricity cost savings. I want to be able to reinvest those savings against that structural gap. And that's kind of boring by itself, but the practical benefit is that will be able, allow us more flexibility in reallocating those crews for things like potholes. So these kind of down, week-to-week issues. So I, we're not going to get all the way there in one year, but we're going to be able to make decent progress on that, I think, given that we're still looking at an overall three percent. So there'll be many other specifics laid out as we get the, the budget proposal fully fleshed out over the next few weeks. But those are some of the key ones that I wanted to throw out there for you.
Thank you. Excuse me. I'm sure we're all curious about, are you making progress on the ability to find funding to replace the loss of CDBG funds? And are you confident of being able to?
It's a multi-part problem and a multi-part answer that is in development. We are very hopeful now to receive transition, transition funding. That will be firmed up certainly before January sixteenth. That could give us as much as half of our block grant that we received in the current year. We think that between those dollars and unobligated monies, there's a portion of the block grant, for example, that goes to administrative support. We think there's a way to cobble funds together from the existing grant and the, and any transition money to have that not be an FY14 general fund budget problem. So that's good. We're still working with DHCD and others about how the capital and social services agencies, monies, how fungible they are. We want to explore that, whether there's any flexibility there. Typically, they're allocated on a percentage basis with caps. So we're, we're taking a long look at that. So I don't have a specific recommendation ready for you on that, but I am completely aware of the issue and will, will be responsive to it.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments from Mr. Musanti about any of the budget issues? No, none? Okay, I have to ask about the health insurance part. I think we've touched on this before, but I don't recall the answer. So obviously, it's incredibly good news to imagine that we might not need an increase in health insurance again. Presumably, you're also looking to the future and to the degree that you can project for that fund for the future and thinking about the benefit of a small increase now, even if you don't totally need it, versus a larger increase in the future that just is, it, because these, these same increases go to the employees and the retirees, it's not just the town. So to kind of manage the smoothness of that increase for them.
Yeah, no, we are painfully aware of that concept and painfully because we've, we've lived it when rate increases, you know, many years ago were not adequate to meet what was clearly a trend, not a, not a aberration. But we're working now in an environment where the trust fund is in a much stronger position. So there is much more of a cushion. And it's, we are getting regular quarterly or more frequent updates from our benefits consultant about trend or claims projections going out eighteen months at a time. So it's with that background that we're, we're moving toward a zero. It's knowing, we're not expecting, well, I shouldn't jinx it, you know? A year from now, we're looking at ten percent. I can't predict the future, but so far, so good on the trends.
Thank you. And, and I want to emphasize in select board, I'll knows this, of course, but just thank you and congratulations on what a success the turnaround of the healthcare trust fund has been. It is not the usual in any other community or industry or sector at all that the healthcare cost increases are being held at zero or close to zero for multiple years. And as you alluded to, this certainly was not the case a couple of years back when kind of the, the bad planning had us, had us doing a lot of catch-up and things were really out of whack. But since then, this has been just an enormous success. And so I just want to make sure you recognize how, how appreciated that is. And, you know, we can't be complacent and take this for granted. That, that really is, that is some seriously skillful management of a very expensive and complicated trust that is, that is keeping us in good shape. So that's, that's fine work by you and your staff. Thank you. All right, anything else on budget? So the part of why he's doing this is so that we don't get to January sixteenth and then throw him some big surprise like, you didn't what? Or, you know, you told us what? And so, so this is an opportunity for feedback. So Ms. Brewer.
Yes, I think it would be a really useful chart of all the many charts we like to use in the finance committee report because it, it is huge. It, it figures into collective bargaining discussions. It figures into everybody looking at their own personal budget. You know, they think, oh, my gosh, my property taxes are going up, my health insurance is going up, but the town is budgeting well enough that we're not having to suddenly leap like some private and other organizations are having to do. So I think the emphasis on that is good. In terms of the solid waste enterprise fund, I imagine there'll be lots of background material on this when we get to it. But I know that, I'm, I'm sort of vaguely remembering this effort of the recycling refuse committee trying to get their arms around what might people be willing to do, what might they be willing to pay for? You know, to throw my personal anecdote in there, I haven't bought a sticker this year because I decided I didn't really need to go to the take it or leave it just to pay that money to go for a sticker if didn't I just depend on my private hauler for all my recycling needs. But I know that there are people who depend on being able to get rid of their trash. But I know that there are people who depend on being able to get rid of their trash there and being able to get rid of their recycling there. So, I mean, at what point does it just become, you know, I guess I'm trying to get a sense of, of how significant this is because, you know, $70 for a sticker that can't be transferred from one car to another is already expensive and that doesn't even give you the ability to throw any trash away. So at what point is it a service, you know, for 10 people versus is it a service for 300 or 400 people? How do we make that?
I spent part of my day in the gory details of solid waste management with staff today. I know there were somewhere around 2,000 people or businesses in town who have the stickers for solid waste. So that $75 a year fee and then there's a per bag fee with, you know, bulky items have a slot, have different scale to it and the commercial stickers are per vehicle and it's a, a larger amount than that. So we're looking at specifics. That'll be refined for January, keeping in mind that there's a cost to providing the baseline services. So the recommendation isn't going to be, you know, it's going to be close to a status quo service level budget because there's all these other things playing out, including, okay, what's the long-term future? Should we stay in the transfer station business? What about other recycling initiatives and how might they be organized or paid for? That's not ready for January or even July, but it's a big to-do item that is well down the field. But the fee levels are being looked at in the context of contrasting that with what the cost of curbside pickup and recycling are, you know, for the average family, it's $400 or more, depending on the volume of how many barrels and all that stuff. So it's in that vein that, that an adjustment would be considered, that it's still meant to appeal to the do-it-yourselfers and those looking to save some money. So that'll be the context, but there's also a gap between what they are now and what the cost is of, of keeping it afloat.
Because, because, and without wanting to get into the huge discussion of it, in terms of structurally, I think it's one of the areas where we look at what is the point of providing this service because?
Right.
Is it the town's job to provide a lower-cost alternative for people to get rid of their trash when we have to have the overhead of having people there, blah, 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 blah? Like you say, these various things down the field. And so I think just, you know, as we explain it to people going forward, that it isn't just, we're trying to recoup costs, but we also are evaluating whether or not this is a service, you know, just like we don't have a leaf vacuum anymore. This is the kind of thing we are going to be able to continue to do just because costs have, have gone up so much. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think in the interim, you know, to the extent we're going to stay in that business, which may be a long-term thing, don't get me wrong because those recommendations aren't ready yet, the pricing should be reflecting what it costs.
Right.
So that's, that's the analysis that's being updated now.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Stein?
What I was gonna, I was expecting you to say something about the reduced revenue that the state is experiencing and giving us really bad news. So this is relatively optimistic. I wondered if you want to say whether you think that local aid will be, which is always a worry.
Again, I cannot predict the future, guarantee the future. I'd be in a different line of work, probably. All of us have been doing this for a while in different capacities. It's not unusual that there's a lowering of expectations kind of language that goes on this time of year.
Okay.
Having said that, the year-to-date revenue at the state level is below their budgeted revenue and the question is, is that a trend or is it temporary? What, what is it? And if so, what, what does that portend for next year? Our existing projections, we haven't really changed since October, which was basically level-funded state aid with a very tiny incremental Chapter 70 education aid increase. I don't see my recommendation changing before the governor's proposal comes out at the very end of January. I have a hard time believing there will be a reduction. It really remains to be seen what's the magnitude of any increase and, you know, I guess I'm less optimistic than October because of that more recent news, but I, I just don't see it being a cut. I really don't at this point, but then we'll see.
Yeah. Well, maybe they'll even increase taxes for some of the areas of the budget at the state level that have big holes like the transportation sector. We'll see.
Ms. Burr?
As a preview, I guess, to an upcoming BCG meeting, I guess we'll hear there where the schools stand in terms of their grants, just as we, what you're trying to accommodate with our block grant loss. They were also looking at some potential losses just to ensure that somehow that's being accommodated in a way that needs to be done without throwing all our percentages and pie pieces and everything off.
Other questions or comments? I'll just note that I, I think the, the part about using the energy savings from the new lights to make more efficient and practical how we fund our DPW folks is fantastic and I think that that would be a really great thing to explain in detail in the, in the budget report, in, in your budget to us and also.
Cover memo.
Because, you know, we talk about this project work, like, you know, most people have no idea what that means and to the degree that that is really a, a big impact on how come our potholes are in such terrible condition now. People would like to know that there's a real cause and effect there and that there is a, specific steps are being taken to remedy it. And I would really love if we could, in that report, have kind of some history on how that happened. What, what was the decision that got made that, that put the, that staff funding in that peculiar category? Did it have a benefit? Was that a good idea? Was it a good idea at the time and it only has played out badly like eventually or, or what? But it would be good to know how that happened and when and if we're doing anything else weird like this now, such that we might want to worry about it. And also, I think the OPEB, the idea of being able to deal with some of the OPEB obligations from the enterprise funds, that's, that's like painless and just seems so practical and I, I think that's brilliant. So I'm, I'm happy to hear all of that. All right, we're ready to move on from this. Okay, did you have any recent and upcoming stuff you want to discuss?
Yeah, again, real quick, there is tree work that is beginning this month on the notch related to the next state project, which are long planned for and now funded improvements to the roadway and 116 through the notch. But there's some tree clearing that's going, that will be going on, on the state job. State officials along with Mr. Zomack, Mr. Moore, I've come in and briefed the Public Shade Tree Committee recently. Conscom has been in the loop on that. Just wanted you and the public to be aware that you'll see activity out there. The good news is that it's not related to the Atkins Corner work, but it's, it was planned as a coordinated effort with the Atkins Corner work to make that road, stretch of road on the southern tip of the town safer. Next, there'll be a ceremony, press conference, if you will, this Wednesday morning, the 5th at 11:00 AM with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Secretary Rick Sullivan and his staff, key staff will be here. They'll be announcing 13 land grants and I can tell you that we are going to be receiving one of them. We'll get those details on Wednesday. So we're very pleased to host that and there'll be other communities and you're certainly encouraged and we've asked key members of staff and boards, et cetera, to also attend. So we're excited about that. That's Wednesday morning. We did receive word, if you remember, there were a couple of items funded, recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee in Article 8 of the November 19th town meeting. One of those was for, for improvements on the North Common directly in front of Town Hall. We did receive word from the same agency that we did not receive that grant. So we were not like shocked by that, but we were disappointed. They did tell us that was a very competitive application, strongly encouraged us to reapply next year. That would have been the second consecutive year we received a park grant, Parks and Recreation Improvements Grant after getting a grant last year for War Memorial Pool. They strongly encouraged us to reapply and they said, while it was a strong application, it could be even stronger with some additional community input. So we've had some, so I've directed staff to think about how we would solicit that additional feedback, knowing that it would be a design build grant anyways. We're being told, look, it would be even stronger if there was a more specific reference to community feedback on that. So we're going to pursue that. I've asked staff to reapply. That article was contingent on the grant award, which didn't happen in this case. I've asked staff to reapply for CPA money through the CPAC process that's beginning in about a week. So that's.
This week.
Ms. Stein, question?
I was wondering when you resubmit or reapply for the park grant for the North Common, when does that do?
The deadline is, I believe, June or July. So the timing would work out fine because in this scenario with additional community feedback and ideally CPAC recommendation and town meeting funding in place at the time of the application, that would be another positive for that application.
Okay. Other questions or comments from Mr. Musanti? All right, then, thank you very much. Moving on, member reports, liaison and representative reports. We have not done this for about a month because we've been at town meetings since then, so anyone have liaison reports? Ms. Stein?
The Board of Health met November 29th and approved drinking water regulations, which were requested by the Department of Environmental Protection and Mr. Moore came and spoke about them and they have been completed. Amherst has rejoined the Public Health Emergency Coalition. The Cambodian Outreach Worker Fund's dried up, so at the moment, we don't have a Cambodian Outreach Worker, but we hope that there will be funds somehow sooner or later. UMass is going smoke-free in 2013, which I think is very interesting. And then I also attended the Personnel Board Meeting, which was on November 28th, the day before. And the UN Resources Group under Deb Radway are thinking about reorganization and there was discussion of exit interviews, which I got to read one and they're extremely informative about how a particular department is functioning and what the stresses might be within the department and what the kudos to that department should be. So it, they're extremely valuable. I had no idea how valuable an exit interview could be until I got to read one. So that's all I have to say. Those are my two liaison reports.
Thank you. Mr. Musanti, could you comment about the Cambodian Outreach Worker situation?
Yeah, that for many years has been funded through grants from a Hartford-based agency, Camer Health Associates, and they've been relying on federal monies. And after many, many years, their funding was not renewed and so they're still making efforts, working with our health director to try to identify alternative funding. This has been kind of an unfolding thing over the last several months and as of now, there is no alternative funding.
And it, doesn't the town match those funds?
We've been, we've been providing the benefit costs and the grant was paying for the hours worked.
Ms. Burr?
I just, I regret that I don't remember more of the details. Obviously, town manager does, but I know that this was a point of contention for people a couple of years ago at town meeting, that this was of particular concern. Years ago, we used to share one with the schools. I don't know if they have any relationship, if there's still that coordination between health and schools associated with that, but to have this just kind of disappear mid-year feels off in turn. I mean, it's the reality, but at the same time, it seems as though we need to do, not to necessarily immediately say, oh, well, I guess we'll have to stop doing something else to pay for this, but it's not, given that it's been a point of contention in the past, I think it's a bit of a problem to just leave it lay there. So I'm, I'm wondering what we do.
There's been exhaustive discussion and attempts with schools and other community groups about alternative models or funding models that, that will continue. So far, one has not been identified that works for all parties.
Still working on it.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Oh, that was for Ms. Stein's liaison report. Okay, any other liaison representative reports? Okay, I hate to do this to you, but I've got a few. So Council on Aging, which I finally got to after many, many absences, I want to just give you a couple of updates on things I think you need to know. One of them is their parking pilot program that they had brought to us a while back. The pilot is now over, it's been very successful. They would like to make a few tweaks to it and I'm going to get them scheduled pretty soon to come and give us an update on all of that. So there's that. Also related to transportation, this is just kind of a shout-out to the Friends of the Amherst Senior Center that has just recently purchased for the senior center a 2010 Dodge Caravan, it's a seven-passenger van. Senior Center for a while has had a, like a small bus that, that they bought, I don't know, years ago, but the problem is you need a commercial driver's license to drive it so they can only use it when they can get a commercial driver and they've had great cooperation from the schools and stuff on that. But this really increases their options to have a seven-passenger van. This was bought by the Friends of the Senior Center. This is the nonprofit that Town Meeting voted to form just a couple of years ago to order them, to enable them to raise funds to support the senior center. So this is a great, really concrete, very practical way for them to support the senior center. And what they've done is they've donated the van to the town and the town will pay its insurance and maintenance, but, but the vehicle was purchased by them, so that is terrific. Community Innovation Challenge Grant and regionalization. The senior center is, like the Regional School District Planning Committee and others, I understand, because it's a very big grant program, is seeking a Community Innovation Challenge Grant and they are looking to do it on the basis of essentially trying to regionalize or increase regionalization options with Pelham for senior services. A lot of folks from Pelham already attend the senior center, but there are various Amherst-specific programs like the Are You OK? emergency calls from the police station, the SALT Council, things like that, various things that Pelham folks might be able to participate in also, so, so they are pursuing that.
I can just give you a quick update on that. I know that, I mean, there are some other issues that need to be worked out, so I know that they did not apply for the Senior Services Challenge Grant by the November 30th deadline, but there'll be, there's ongoing dialogue with staff and with Pelham about how we might better collaborate in the future that works for all parties.
Thank you. So never mind about that part.
That's a good one.
Another thing relevant to us is raking. Raking leaves is always a big deal for senior citizens and they, they try and get volunteers to, to do this and match, match the needs of folks who, particularly if you can't afford to hire somebody to do it for you, then what do you do? And the Select Board's Coffee Hour, which unfortunately I was not able to be at, that was right after my father's accident, it was a great source of- was right after my father's accident, it was a great source of volunteer contacts. So, all kinds of volunteer groups, student groups came forward to assist with that. So, I just wanted to let you folks know that that Coffee Hour was very helpful in that regard. And that's exactly what we're trying to do with that, really building bridges between the students and the, and town government. So, there's a perfect example. Okay, and a little bit more detail, a little bit longer, I'll try and be quicker, actually, but Campus and Community Coalition, of course, this is how I spend my life, right? So, the, this group has been, we've been trying to identify not just our strategic plan for the future, but really specific goals for this year. And so, some of us have been meeting kind of in smaller groups to do this, and what we want to do is be not just kind of, you know, the pie in the sky, like, high-level stuff. We want to be talking about real deliverables. So, we are concentrating our work for spring in just a couple of key areas. We talked about, okay, we've done all of this work, we've got all of this outreach happening, we've got all this coordination happening, all kinds of good messaging, blah, blah, blah. But we've got ongoing problems. The ongoing problems, and we talked about what those were, and as we talked about everything, we really came down to the fact that they are primarily disruptive parties, and I emphasize the disruptive because parties that aren't disruptive are not a problem. The walking around between parties that happens, kind of these roving bands that we talk about, which sometimes become parties in themselves, but they certainly have a bunch of negative impacts as far as noise, litter, you know, all kinds of things. And something called pre-gaming, which is a growing problem, and this is young people drinking typically in their dorms before they leave. And what they, what the impacts that has, among the impacts that has, is they typically do that in a very short period of time. They ingest a whole bunch of alcohol because they're going out and they know that they can't get into the bars, they won't be able to be served downtown. They get to a party, they may or may not be able to be served at a party, so they're trying to make sure that they have plenty of alcohol in them before they go out. So, this has, this has many different problems. It contributes to the disruption of parties. It contributes to the, this walking around group problem when these kids are all intoxicated. It has a very big impact on our ambulance response situation. It has a big impact related to the ambulance response at things like Mullins Center events and other on-campus events, where, again, the students know that they're not going to be able to drink. So, trying to discourage pre-gaming is another way that we're, that we're trying to direct our efforts. And so, when we talked about how to do this, we said, all right. So, part of all of these issues is communication. It's about the messaging, the information, making sure people understand a bunch of information related to these issues. Some of it's town bylaw stuff, some of it's code of student conduct stuff, it's all kinds of things. So, that's a component of all of these parts. But then, what are the other components? So, what we've done is, we've set ourselves up into four working groups. One of them is going to concentrate on the communication part of it. The others are going to concentrate on specifically the disruptive parties. What else is it that makes these things disruptive and how, what do you do about it? And so, among the things we talk about there is when parties go viral, this is the whole social media thing. So, you invite, you know, 10 of your closest friends, and somebody tweets about it or texts their friends about it, that gets passed around the world, and next time, you know, there are 300 people you don't know at your party. That's a really big deal. So, they're going to, they're going to be looking at specific things like that. How do you prevent that? What do you do about it? And they're going to make recommendations on strategies to deal with that. The walking around group, again, what are the causes and effects of these roving bands of students, kind of going from place to place, being noisy, et cetera? And brainstorm on how to, how to diminish those causes and diminish the negative impacts, and obviously, the pre-gaming, as I talked about. So, this is another group with a really ambitious schedule. We've set the end of January for each of these subgroups to bring back recommendations that we can then try and massage and really make actionable for the spring to make, to make the Coalition's group extremely concrete and practical for what we're doing right now, because really, we are doing all this work. We've got all these great resources, a bunch of great people at the table. So, we're trying to focus on what are, what continue to be the weak points and the vulnerabilities. So, you'll be hearing a lot more about that. Related to that, we're also looking at, that group and others are looking at party registration. And we had, last week, we, many of us attended a webinar, a web seminar from a group in Fort Collins, Colorado, that, at Colorado State University is there, and they do a party registration system, which it's kind of complicated, and various schools do it various ways across the country, and so it would take a lot of homework and research. But, but kind of in a nutshell, what they're doing in Fort Collins is, in return for the students registering their parties, the point of registering is that, A, they then get a bunch of information about how to be responsible in the party that they have registered, and B, if they've registered their party, what that equals for them is, if somebody calls with a complaint about the party, dispatch at the police station would call that party host, the person who's listed as the contact on the registration, and say, okay, you've got 20 minutes to shut this down. Either shut it down or, you know, seriously reduce the noise or whatever. If we get another call after 20 minutes that things are still noisy there, then the police are going to come. And so, the benefits of this are, the students, when they were talking about, you know, all kinds of students say, well, if the neighbors just told us, if we just knew we were too loud, we would have stopped, you know, it's too bad we had to get arrested, we had to get a big fine or whatever, to learn that, if we just knew. So, so this is a system that they worked out and said, okay, here's your warning. And if that doesn't work, then we all agree that you're, you're going to get the fine. Sometimes, you're still going to get the fine. I mean, if it's totally egregious and, you know, the cops can hear you three blocks away, or, you know, all kinds of things. It's not a get-out-of-jail-free card, and it does not in any way guarantee that these students wouldn't get, these party hosts wouldn't get a fine, but it's a way of helping to prevent that. On the police side, the appeal is that they, in a college town like ours, they have all kinds of high priorities, all kinds of calls they need to respond to. Noise complaints are not at the top of their list. I mean, they're dealing with domestic violence, all kinds of very serious issues are happening. So, they can't always get to a party call as quickly as they want to. So, you know, just like here, you've got long, long wait times for the responses. This drastically cuts down on where the police need to respond. So, the police appreciate it because it helps them to better stretch out their limited resources. So, so far, it's been a very successful situation for them. Doesn't eliminate the parties, doesn't eliminate the tickets, anything like that, but it has struck a real balance that has, has been beneficial for, for all involved. So, these are the kinds of things, when we talk about, you know, best practices in other communities and everything, like, we're looking at this, at all of these issues from all of these different ways, and, and this is just another, another thing that's on the horizon and under consideration. So, I just wanted folks to know about that. That was all. Questions or comments? Ms. Brewer?
How does keg registration fit in with that? And just in terms of your experiences thus far and having these conversations, because keg registration is kind of this, just this odd little thing we've got off on the side that people don't grasp, they don't know why they're doing it, blah, blah, blah. So, does it fit into that as well? Is it kind of another variation on that?
So, I wasn't around for when keg registration was created. We did boost the fines for that to $300, like everything else, a couple of years ago. My understanding from students is that they basically don't bother to get kegs anymore because you don't want to be telling the police department where your parties are. And I don't, I'm not aware that we get too many unregistered keg violations. What the, and, we don't, yeah. What the Fort Collins folks say, and again, there's every flavor of this, and just because they do it one way doesn't mean that we would have to do it this way if we went down this road at all, but the police don't get the list of parties. They specifically don't. So, it's not like the police are driving around looking for the parties, because that was kind of the first reaction of the students. Why the heck would I flag my party for the police? But the police have better things to do than go around and look for parties. But the dispatch officer has them, and so it's something to check against. So, once you get a noise violation, you say, a noise complaint call, you look at the list and say, okay, is this on the list of registered? If not, then it just becomes another police call. They just let the police know, you've got a noise complaint on, you know, Elm Street, and go check it out. If that's a registered party, then before the dispatcher does that, they call the host and they say, listen, your party that's registered here, we've gotten a noise complaint, you know, consider this your warning, here's your grace period. If we get another call after that grace period, then the police are going to come out. So, it's a very interesting concept, and we'll be looking at it even more. Anything else? Okay, anybody else have liaison reports? Ms. Brewer?
You mentioned the Coffee Hour. Could we, and that, there was obviously much confusion around that time because we missed you so desperately when you were away, but we still need the sheet of the contacts.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, it's out there. Sounds like senior center.
Council on Aging got with it. Annual report.
Hey, that's great. And I mean, it shouldn't be your problem, but it is just one of the things on the list because it is awfully nice to remind ourselves, especially since you see a lot more of these people on a regular basis than we do, but if we can remind ourselves, oh, yeah, that's who that person was who I said could talk to so-and-so about that thing.
Thank you, yes. So, yeah, it is on my list. I hope to get it to you before, before next year's Coffee Hour. In the meantime, if there's anyone you want to contact, let me know, I'll put you in touch.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else for liaison reports?
If nobody else has a liaison report, may I ask a quick Town Manager question?
Sure.
And that is in regards to, and, you know, email is great, but then you sometimes forget to bring it up in public as well, which is that the parking, the free parking has been awesome so far, as I understand it, and it was great having the little bid elves give out brownies on Saturday during the snow. It was quite lovely. However, had not realized, had not noticed, had forgotten, whatever, a few people noticed that the bag said two-hour limit, and that's not what we actually voted on. Yes, they're normally two-hour meters, et cetera. So, what I would just like to know is that at some point in the future, that we would, y'all can just do this and let us know how it works out, talk to the chamber, talk to the bid, to say, you know, did customers have any complaints? I mean, there were some vendors that were concerned at a particular fair that was taking place, the Unitarian, because they just didn't, they were just worried, because, you know, vendors always worry because they never know where they're supposed to park at any given event, if it actually became a problem for any customers. I'm assuming we didn't actually chalk tires or anything, which we don't normally do anyway, but we didn't try and enforce the two hours, and that nobody got tickets for that. But just so that we all have a shared understanding next year of how it's supposed to work, and so that people know that, yes, those are not, if we continue to do it the way we are doing it, to say, yes, it's two-hour parking, we're not enforcing the two-hour limit, but obviously, we would like turnover because that's what you do on a downtown kind of thing. But just so everybody's clear on what it is, but just to make sure there weren't any particular concerns that arose from when you're having your usual conversations with the parking and chamber and bid people. It'd be useful to hear back.
I'm happy to do that, and.
At some point.
Ms. Hayden?
I have a quick question. How many of those bags are left?
I'll have to get back to you on that.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if they aren't left over, leftover stock, and that's why they got used.
Well, can I just say, the, the, the clear advice and commitment is follow-up on this. Holiday parking, you know, incentives that the Board has voted in various ways over the years is related to the cost of parking, not that every other parking regulation is, you know, temporarily taken out of context. So, I think whenever those bags were purchased, which was a number of years ago, I don't know when, the encouragement was free parking and making it clear that it was free parking, but also in a hopefully friendly, customer-friendly kind of way, with the holiday colors on the bags and everything else, that it's a prime on-street space and it's encouraged for turnover, which was the whole point, was to get more customers and visitors into the downtown during the holiday season. So, that, I suspect, was a motivation behind putting the two-hour reminder on the bag itself versus an all-day pass to shuttle over to campus or whatever.
So, the larger point, I think, Ms. Brewer's point, is the shared expectation, just so we know. It either, it either is for two hours or isn't for two hours, and so when we make the vote, that we know, and we then discuss it appropriately.
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Anything else on liaison, remember? Okay, I don't have anything for Chair Report, Calendar Preview. We have one more meeting this year. At that meeting, we will have a liquor license hearing for the Alteration of Premises for Mission Cantina. Hooray, they're expanding. And we will have an update from the Town Manager, a progress report on goals to date. And there will be a bunch of other things, I'm sure, that happens between now and then, but that is our last one of the year, which will be very nice. And then, we start meeting again in January. If you have things that need to happen, I can't remember at the moment when our first January meeting is. I think it's the second week of January, so that's going to be several weeks between meetings, so do be, do be thinking about anything that might be time-sensitive between that time and try and, try and front-load those to me so we get them onto the agenda for next time. All right, if there is nothing else, then I will make the executive session motion.
Okay, I was going to move to adjourn to a special, to a executive session. I'll let you do that.
If you don't mind my making this. All right, so, I move to enter executive session per Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, Part A, Subset 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. An open meeting, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the Select Board will not return to public session at the conclusion of executive session.
Brewer, aye.
Aye.
O'Keefe, aye.
Wald, aye.
Hayden, aye.
Thank you. Then, without objection, this meeting adjourns to executive session at 8:57, and again, will not reconvene publicly, so we will see you all again on Monday, December 17th. Thank you very much.